Kolosierakalunen Nerbam
The episode of Koloshens
Erandamari Garam
Chapter 2
Padimundru, padinange, padinayinde Vasikala
Verses 13 through 15 And you being dead in your sins and the uncircumcision of your flesh had thick weakened together with him, having forgiven you all trespasses, blotting out the handwriting of ordinances that was against us, which was contrary to us, and took it out of the way, nailing it to his cross, and having spoiled principalities and powers, he made issue of them openly, triumphing over them in it.
Ungal paavangalinaaleyum, ungal maansavithuthasaidanam illaameeninalayum, mariththavirala irundha ungalayum, avarode kooda veerpathi, akkramangal ellavachim ungalukku manniathu, namak yedhiridayaavum, kattaligala namak veerodavavum irundha kayyadathai kulaithe, adhe naduvilidhada vadik edhathu, siluvayin meel aani adithu, thurayithanangalayum adhikaranagali urindukondhe, veliyarangamana koolamaki, avagalin meel siluvailai vetrisirunda
Kathodiyaya parisutthanamathukkumai mundaavada
May the name of the Lord be glorified
Inge siluvayil avar vettisirundharindhu cholla patharakara
Here it is said that he triumphed on the cross
Siluvay maranam enbadu, adhe tolviin adayalam alla
The death of the cross is not a sign of defeat
Siluvayil avar vettisirundharindhu vedam teeli vaagachollukara
The Bible clearly says that he triumphed on the cross
Indrikkim kooda anegar siluvayi marnatte pariyasikkarathu ningal parkala
Even today we find many people who scorn and mock the death on the cross
Ee n siluvailai avar katha venndu mendu cholluvar
They would say why should he shout on the cross?
Ee n angi marikke venndu mendu cholluvar
They would ask why would they, why would he die on the cross?
Ee n enne kayvittirindhu ee n katharavendu mendu soluvar
Why should the Lord Jesus cry out saying, "Lord, why has the forsaken me?"
Ah, ibbidi pallarum pallavidangalile kellvi kerkumboludhe vedam chollukara, siluvayi maranam, adhu or vettin adayalam
Likewise, when people ask various kinds of questions, the Bible says, the death of the cross is a sign of victory
Yedhanalalavu avar siluvailai adike pathar, yedai vettisirundharindhu teeli vaagachollapatharakara
The Bible clearly tells us for what reasons he was crucified on the cross, and for what he hung on the cross
Teeli vaaga angi vedavathai cholla patharakara
The scripture clearly tells us about the same
Aani adithu
He was nailed
Avurindukonde
He, are he blotting?
Avar siluvailai vettisirundhar
Finally, he was triumphing on the cross
Na edukkida cholluranana
Why I say this?
Andavraki Esu Krsu siluvailai yedu varthegal chunnada aga cholla patharakara
It is said that Jesus Christ uttered seven words on the cross
Adhu orisalarku teriyum orisalarku teriyadu
Some aware of which, some do not know
Ovaru suviyeshamu ovaru varthai shuti kaatukara
Each Gospel points out to each of these utterances
Poradathle, adhe yedu varthaila modal varthai, pidave, ivrakalariyamulchikararkalivrakalukke manniyum
In one place, among the seven utterances, the first one was, "Father forgive them, for they know not what they do."
Siluvailai todengina modal uuliyavu manniup
The first ministry that Jesus began on the cross is forgiveness
Ananathan kristavatanodhi astibaram manniupendu peace
That is why the foundation of Christianity is forgiveness
Avvalavu adike pathutti, pickke pathutti, kilikka pathutti tongiran naretthle, avar first word, avar manniupathitaam pessnada
When he was making smitten, torn apart, when he was hanging on the cross, the first word that he uttered was about forgiveness
Luca 23:34, it is written down Avar mulindhu modalavu manniup
The first word he uttered on the cross was forgiveness
Parunga, andha kadaisi naretthle kooda
Even at the last moment
Evvalavu arumiyana sharmalan nathinavare
One who conducted beautiful sermons
Avarode malai prasangangal indrikkum nelaithurukkara
His beatitudes on the mount are also even today
Ah, avarode omaygal maradhavigalakarukkara
His parables are unchanged today
Ananal, indrikkim andha varthegal maramal irukkarukka karano, avarode siluvayin varthegal manniup
The reason that his words remain unchanged even today is his word on the cross which caused forgiveness
Ananathanas tevanukko, andha manniupai cholla mudindhu
That is why Stephen also could confess about this forgiveness
Alalavu aalkaila munneranu na asapatinga first manniyin
If you desire to progress in your life, first thing you ought to forgive
Luca 23:42 and 43 Erandavudhu siluvayil avar velipadithinadu rachip
The second thing that he revealed on the cross was salvation
Modalavudhu avar velipadithinadu manniup, erandavudhu velipadithinadu rachip
The first thing he revealed was forgiveness, the second thing was salvation
Enna rachipu?
What was that salvation?
Oru siluvayi kallanai, andhadathal rachistada
On that place, he saved a thief on the cross
Yattanayovu eru buddhisoliintirundada oral
A person who did not repent, being advised by many
Avani yarmithirtamudiila
No one could set him right
Thandanegal avani thirtamudiila
Even the judgment could not correct him
Avani yarmith samudhayant thirtamudiila
The society could not correct him
Government avanathirtamudiila
The government could not set him right
Kadaisila avanathirtamudiilannavane, avanakolradukka thantha samudhayam mayarchi eduthathu
Finally, when he was unable to be corrected, the society decided to slay him or kill him
Adhu daavunode kadaisi naram
That was his last moments
Andha mudivu kooda avan siluvailai adichit thirtitanga
Even the end was over because he was crucified on the cross
Anainde adathle oruthana rachikirada
But in that place, the Lord Jesus saves one
Andha siluvayi maranavu, andha erandavudhu varthai, avani nokki varugara
The second utterance on the cross is now proceeding towards him
Avan chunnana?
He said
Andavre
Lord
Siluvailai avan chunnava varthai enbadu?
What were his words on the cross?
Avani enganaarka?
Where is he?
Avani enganaarka?
Where is he?
Pakkathalavu innoru siluvaila tongra
He is also hanging on the cross very close to him
Angarunthu chollara, andavre
From there, he says, "Lord"
Ummode raajyathil neervarumboludhe
When thou comest in thy kingdom
Enne ninachikanka
Remember me
Evvalavu arumiyana oru varth
What a beautiful word
Andha naretthleyavu
Even at that moment
Ilaba
He said no
Ne vandhu, poi, ellati opura vaiduva?
You go and reconcile with the others?
Ennalavu unnu banna mudiyadu
I can do nothing
Ne bible padikinavu?
You should read the Bible
Avridilan chunnara?
Did he say all these?
Orayavu varth
One word
Indrikkini ennodu kooda, paradisilirup
Today thou shall be with me in paradise
Adhu rachipu
That is salvation
Mundravu
Thirdly
Elaar hazukitturkang
Everyone were weeping
Anganga janangalinnu na hazukkara
People were standing here and there and weeping
Oru guhtam pariyasambanukkara
One group was mocking him
Oru guhtam adikkiradu
One group was smiting him
Oru guhtam keeli ponnukkara
One group was scorning him
Anaa, oru guhtathukku unnu mey chiyamdiyam, alukittayee nikkara
But one group was helpless, not knowing what to do, weeping
Andha guhtathle yar nikkara?
Who was among that group?
Eh? Andha guhtathle yarla nikkara?
Who were there in that group?
Ayaruka?
Who were there?
Yovan nikkara
John was there
Uggadha maarmilmaale, na sanjirupan chunnavai benkani kara Angi engi oru varthal orinjunjunju pakkara, enna narakapodin
The one who said, "I will always be leaning upon you," is now in some corner watching what is going to happen
Esu, esu vepetha thaay angani kara
The mother who began Jesus was also standing there
Angarundhu oru varthai aanupurara
From one word from there, he sends
Ena siluvayilayum, oru mahanindra kadame avar seyyavindhiyurukkara
Because he had to finish his duty of a son on the cross
Ananathanam uuliyathukkadukumbodhe
That is why when we ordain people to the ministry
Andha applicationle oru questionruthu
There is a question in the application
Ne yarayavudu paramarikke venndiyapurupil urukkara ya?
Are you in a compulsion that you need to nourish anyone?
Ne uulithukondurara?
You come into the ministry
Pattung ammaavu, unga appavu, unniyasaarudhada nikkara angangor, oru konditionle yaravu urukkangala
Is, are you under a condition where your parents are trusting on you?
Abidina neyirundhenisnijjua? Adha clearpantuva?
If so, you can stay back, finish with them, and come back
Adha namodi uuliyam chollukara
That is what our ministry says
Adheipoludha esu andha kadaisi naretthle
Even so Jesus and his last moments
Araguttara
Whom did he call?
Araguttara
Whom did he call?
Yovanakuttara
He called John
Adho, unodeythaai
Behold thy mother
Mariyalakudushunara, adho unmahan
He called Mary and said, "Behold thy son"
Idha RC karangetukka, adho unthaayna, olakathuke thaayin juli thirupiutta
This is what the RC people consider and say, that Mary is the mother of the whole world
Idho unthaay, abidijolii, roadlela enidipotukum, padripig
In the road, you can find out letters hanging, "Behold thy mother"
Adhu siluvailai udhirindha anbu
That is the love that proceeded from the cross
Ondru manniup
One is forgiveness
Mottondru rachipu
Second is salvation
Mundravudhu anbu
Thirdly is love
Tanne pettaduthu, nindegal, avomanangal, vedanegalai sagithu, indha samudhayathile tanne valarthavu oru thaay
The mother who begat him, endured all kinds of reproaches, shame, and brought him up in this society
Endrika andavurukka adimeenu opukuduthaalo, anneelirundhu saagaravarekka ava oru avomanathathanenjirika, sumandhutha settrika
The moment she surrendered herself, saying, "Lord, I am thine handmaid," from that moment on till her death, she endured all kinds of reproaches and shame on this world
Ava patthumasa esu veshumandhathu maathram alla
Not only did she bear Jesus for ten months
Jeevanulla naalalla nindeyeshumandhav
All through the course of her life, she bore reproach
Ananal, andha kadaisi nimuddathle, angor oru anbu velipadithinadu
So in his last moments, he revealed his love towards her
Idha yovan padthombodha madhikara 25, 26, 27 vasanangalana pakkala
John's Gospel, Chapter 19, verses 25 through 27, you can read this
Ipoldhu devanukkum, avurukkum urukkara thodrabai, avar pudipikira
Now he renews his relationship with God
Than, thanimayai vandavara alla
I did not come all alone
Naan anupappattavan
I was sent
En pidha unnadathil urukkara
My father is high above
Ah, matthi 27, 46 vasanathle, "En devane, en devane," enrakatharinadu
Matthew's Gospel, Chapter 27, verse 46, he says, "My God, my God"
Ee?
Why?
Devanavudhuilla thodrabai, avar pudipikke virminadu
He desired to renew his fellowship, his relationship with God
Enadhalu imayipoldhu kayvada patha oru suunlai
Because it was a circumstance, he was forsaken for a moment
Ah, adhu manidavu oru vyagulathin sattam
It was a sound of agony
Manidav athumavin, oalamahavu adhu kana pathadu
It was the voice of the lamentation of the soul of man
Chellan narakalidha namakkapitavu oru paday anumidikappadukara
Sometimes even we are permitted such parts in our life
Adhu vyagulathin vedanayin varthai
Those are words of agony
Eli, Eli, lama sabakthani
He said, "Eli, Eli, lama sabakthani"
Abidina ennaarto?
What does that mean?
En devane, idhu na esu pesinna, mundravudhu anyabhasai
This was the third word of unknown tongue that Jesus spoke
Esu mondru anyabhasa pesinada
Jesus spoke three words, one on tongues
Abidina karadhana?
Isn't that right?
Esu mondru tripu anyabhasa pesinada
Three times Jesus spoke unknown tongues
Alal mondru siluvaila anyabhasai pesimudichada
This was the third incident where he spoke the unknown tongues on the cross and finished
Modalavudhu, oru manidanudhey, kahadat tharakkardhaka, oru anyabhasai usepannada
First of all, in order to open the eyes of a particular man, he used these unknown tongues
Yavirunudhey mahalayelupuravukka oru anyabhasai usepannada
Secondly, in the incident where he rose again alive, the daughter of jail, he spoke with unknown tongues
Mundravudhu siluvaila oru anyabhasa pesinada
Thirdly, it was on the cross
Mondre adathle avar anyamuligal pesinada
In these three incidents, he spoke with unknown tongues
Eppatha, enrar, orutthunku unnu mey puriyala
He said, "Effatha" No one understood
Sala basigal thirinjavangal anganinnanga, anu orutthunku puriyala
There were multilingual people who were surrounded there
Eppatha, enral, tharakkappaduvayake, enrathama
Effatha means be opened
Ipa andha pillakaka jebikirara
Now he prays for the child
Thaay, tagapan, yovan, yakob, ellapedur, ellavu laukkanduka
The father, the mother, John, James, and Peter all were surrounding him
Sirupenne elandhru, abidin cholla alla
He did not say, "Oh little child, rise up"
Thappun enna chunnara?
Immediately, what did he say?
Talitha humi, abidinar
He said, "Talitha kumi"
Orutthunku puriyala
No one understood
Ananandha pillakikkaadisi
But the child heard it
Sirupenne elandhru, enrathama
Daughter arise, it means
Ipa siluvay
Now it is on the cross
Ipa siluvaila oru anyabhasa pesinada
Now on the cross, he speaks unknown tongues
Final, mudiyapodu
He's going to finish
Appunna indesunnaari, Eli, Eli, lama sabakthani, orutthane, angirukkara, orutthunku puriyala
It is then he said, "Eli, Eli, lama sabakthani," no one understood his words
Anginennavangal enna chunnanga?
All the surrounded him, what did they say?
Eli, Eli, ingra, Eliavu koopurano
He says, "Eli, Eli," does he call for Elijah?
Abidina Bible chollidhu
That is what the Bible says
Ah, Eli, Eli, ingra, pa Eliavu, iman helpukku koopurambolukke, edho narakapodin youschan
He says, "Eli, Eli," so he's calling Elijah for help, they were wanting to know what would happen
Avar anyabhasai pesinada
He spoke with unknown tongues
Pida odhu pesinada
He spoke with the father
Anyabhasai pesukkara, van manushanodala, devanodhu, pesukkara
He that speak with unknown tongues does not speak with man, he speak with mysteries with God
Yovan padthombodhu 28la
John 19:28
Vedavakkyam nerivera takkadaha
That the scriptures might be fulfilled
Nan thagama urukkaren, enduchunnada
He said, "I thirst"
Adhu avurodey, vedanayin ucha kattathai kanvikara
That was the height of his agony
Paadugalin ucha kattathai kanvikara
That is the summit of his sufferings
Avar naam, sirududundhu poruttu, avar thagamanar
For us to be made perfected, he was thirsty
Avarum rendu, moon edathle, indha varthai usepantraara
So in two, three places, he uses this word
Ondru samariastritha pesumboludhu, enakuthaathukutha, anukkeetara
One, when he was speaking with a woman of Samaria, he said, "Give me water to drink"
Renndavudhu veliyarangamahavu siluvailai thagama urukkaren, enduchunnada
Secondly, openly on the cross, he said, "I thirst"
Samariastritha, avar pesinna, andha thagam, avurudhey aalkai, matuvadhakurithu pesinada
The words that he uttered to the woman of Samaria, the thirst that he explained, was to quench her thirst
Inge siluvailai tirkathirasanathin nerivera lagaadu pesinada
Here on the cross, as a fulfillment of the prophetical utterance, he spoke these words
Indirudhatle cholla patharakara
In another place, it is said
Ah, oru vyadiyastan, ellavatalor, oru kavalilulavan, oru pasiya urukkaranakurithu chollumboludhu, avar tanne kurithuthu chunnada aga chollukara
In another place, he says about a sick person, or one who is in prison, or one who is hunger, he speaks about himself
Indha chiriyariil oru van thagama urukkumboledhu, naan thagamayindhu
If one of the least of these are thirsty, then I am thirsty
Ah, yovan padthombodhu 34 parukumboludhu
John 19:30
Angi avar chollukara, ellam mudindhu, enduchunnada
He says, "It is finished"
Idhu vettin varthai
These are words of victory
Idha aaravudhu varthai
This is the sixth utterance
Luca 23:6 Angi kadaisiaga, avar tanudhey aaviyay, esu devanathil opukudutha
Finally, he commended his spirit into the hand of the father
Idhu na final settlement, andavrakaila, apriya samarpich
This was the final settlement, he commended himself into the hands of the Lord
Idhu das esu siluvaila chunnay, yedu varthegal
These are the seven utterances of Jesus on the cross
Namipen, subjectla pogaradu alla
Today we are not going into that subject
Namipoldhu kolosierandhu padinayindukavurukkaram
Today we are coming back to Koloshens 2:15
Ah, siluvayi pathi ninga pallaprasangangkaadipig
You'd have heard many sermons about the cross
Yeah, cinemaakal padripig
You would have even seen many cinemas
Abidina?
Isn't that true?
Namalungal kooda pallavidamana siluvayi kaachigala ninga, pallavidangalile ninga padripig
Even our people who have watched certain scenes about the cross in various ways
Oru manshen, vaitlarundhu, office kalamunna
There was one man who was proceeding to his office from the house
Avanukke sarirathle cholla mudiyadu, varu vyadi
He was, he had unspeakable sicknesses in his body
But avam oru periyakodi swara
But he was a multimillionaire
Avam velinathle vucharindha oral
He belonged to a country abroad
Avanukke kustrohom bolavu oru mosamana vyadi
He had a very terrible sickness, like leprosy
Endha treatmentli, avanukke sogakala
He never receives healing with any treatment
Orunal, avan office kalambitukumboludhu
One day when he was proceeding towards his office
TVla, oru channel odhiut
There was one channel which was going on in the television
Alal orutthupesiidhurukkara
One person was speaking there
India vacharindha avar orutthupesiidhuka
He belonged to India, and he was speaking
Onakenna vyadiyirundhalam, ippoldhu nee molangal padhituva ya
Whatever be your sickness, kneel down right now
Siluvayil irundhu, avarodey sugam, unay sandikum
His healing from the cross will meet you right now
Abidio oru message odhu
There was one message that was going on
Indha office kalambitu veliyavara, vandhitunnavu, indha kaachiyapathadu oranay, apriya TVkumunala molangal potta
The person who saw this scene, at the moment he was pressing out towards his office, now knelt down before the television
Avanukka adha viswasi cha
He believed on those words
Ipoldhu siluvailarundhu, karam nettabutti unni thodukkara, adhu unakke, ippoldhu nee sugam akkara
Now the hand of the Lord Jesus is stretched out from the cross and is touching you, you will be healed right now
Avam molangal potta
He knelt down
Andha message, altrakal kuduthukkeetara
He gave the altar call during the message
Orisalakni nimuddathle, andha kustrohom, strohom ellame avanavutti velipuyich
Within few moments, he found him totally healed of his leprosy
Apriyapooranasugam
He was perfectly healed
Avam oranay, andha India vin podakara, kontaktpanna
He immediately contacted the preacher who was in India
Tonnurukodi anupunana kanikey
He sent ninety crores as an offering
Adhu ipoldhu oru palgalek kalakamahavu urukkara
Now it is as a university
Kandupidichurvige
You would now find it out
Andha tonnurukodi na, oru palgalek kalakathinudhey astibaram thodakkam
The ninety crores is the foundation of a university now
Andha oru message la touchingai sugamana
He was being touched and healed by that one message
Yattanayovu ridhna siluvay kaachigale pathu rachikupadukara
Many see the scene of Calvary and are saved
Namipadukkula pohevrimbal
We are not going to go into it now
Ananidai ponda oru nalile, esu krsu siluvailai tonginadu
But a sane day just like this, Jesus Christ hung on the cross
Andha kodandhey thukinnu, rendu kodandhey thukinnu Enakondhu siluvay message remba mukhyo Kathodiyaya parisutthanamathukkumai mukimai mundaavada
Glory be unto the holy name of the Lord
Siluvailai esu vettisirundhar
Jesus triumphed on the cross
Idhu Paul alakaga eduthu pesikara
Saint Paul, exorcist
Thurayithanangalayum adhikaranagali urindukonde
Having blotting out, having spoiled the principalities and powers
Veliyarangamana koolamaki
He made it an open show
Esu siluvailai vettisirundhar
Jesus triumphed on the cross
Esu yedai jaitaar, enrathan ennekam message
Today's message is what Jesus overcame
Esu yavaygalay jaita
What are those which Jesus overcame?
Nam yavaygalay jaykavay
What should we overcome to?
Siluvailai esu tongunara, edukkida tongunara
Jesus hung on the cross, what for did he hang there?
Endha nokkathukaka, na thonginadu
What was the purpose for which Jesus hung there?
Adha namam marandrapudadu
That we should not forget
Ya manushana jaykavaykara, avar jaitaar
To make man triumph, he overcame
Notthandugalaga thothuponam, manidha samudhayathai jaykavaykara, dha, avar manushanala jaykamudiyungara, siluvaila shenjikaatnara
Mankind which was defeated for centuries together, he hung on the cross and made them triumph, and gave them an open show, that the man should triumph
Ninga vedathle ninga parukumboludhu
When you consider the Bible
Oru velas siluvaila veliyadha esu marikannuma, abidilavu oru kellvi elumbala
You might have a question, should Jesus die only through the cross?
Ninga ellam markathin thedi parunga
If you will seek every religion
Ellam vedangalay aarayindhu parunga
Examine all kinds of scriptures
Esu vin maranavu, angay eludhappadukara
The death of Jesus is written there
Ah, ingiinkooda nam parukumboludhu
Even if you consider here
Ippiditaavu avar marikannungara, devanthe thittam
It was the plan of God, that this is how Jesus should die
Ninga neerimuligalda padichu padhingana
If you read in the Proverbs
Ah, kanmalayilay paambin valiyapathicholirukkara
It is written about the way of a serpent upon a rock
Agayathle kalugin vali cholla patharakara
The way of an eagle in the air
Naduk kadaliilay oru kapaludhey vali cholla patharakara
The way of a ship in the middle of the sea
Indha mondru vinodamana vigal, aachiriyamana vigal, sindikamudiyadu vigal, enducholla patharakara
These three things are those things which are excellent, which are marvelous, which wonderful things
Anan, nalavudhu unnurukke
There is a fourth thing
Adha ellathayoda highlightuladu
That is the most highlighting part of all
Ninga adha padichu padhingana, aachiriyamark
If you read it, you would be amazed[1227.68] Proverbs chapter eighteen, thirty verses eighteen and nineteen. You can find three things which are too wonderful. There is a fourth thing which I know not. I repeat. The first three things are too wonderful. What are they? The way of the serpent upon a rock. The way of the ship in the middle of the sea. The way of the eagle in the air. These are wonderful. Because they take the right course. But that thing which passes my understanding is one. What is that? The way of a man with a maid. Who is this virgin? It is not one who is wandering in the streets. The Bible does not address to her. The paths of the cross of Jesus who came down from heaven seeking for his bridal church which is the chaste virgin of Christ. Who is this virgin or the maid? What does the Bible speak about this maid? I have espoused you as a chaste virgin to Christ to one husband that is Christ. Each of us are appointed as chaste virgins to one husband which is Christ. When that is so. Second Corinthians chapter eleven verse two. A man who came seeking for man to make him as a chaste virgin to Christ, the path that he took is a path which cannot be comprehended. He sent his only son in order to redeem man. Made him being born of a virgin. Made him take the incarnation of man on the earth. Established the kingdom of the father on the earth. He took the path of sufferings on the cross in order to redeem man who has once fallen again is the path which cannot be comprehended. What are those things he triumphed? We shall see then and finish. Coming to John chapter sixteen. What does the Bible say? Behold, I have overcome the world. Before Jesus went to the cross, he overcame the world. There is a very important thing. John's Gospel chapter sixteen verse thirty-three. The most important part of Jesus who overcame on the cross is that he overcame the world. Today, the world is a very evil force. It is under the control of the God of this world. The whole world is under the control of the wicked. First of all, a believer just as Jesus overcame should triumph in this world. That is why we preach that we should hate the world. Why is there a difference between the Christians and the Pentecostal people? If I try to twist my message towards the worldly people, then according to the aspect of my message, this place will not contain the people. They say now the denomination, there are seven services that take place only in the Pentecostal mission, only one service. Is nothing like that? A little that we give loose. If at all we say you can experience the world a little bit, the whole crowd will be here. Jesus triumphing on the cross is that first of all, he destroyed and slain the God of this world. Jesus was standing, he came there. Who was that? He was the God of this world who came to him. All of a sudden, he confronted him. Jesus said, behold, come out the God of this world. Having said so. He has no part with me. So first thing that a child of God should triumph is the world. That is why the concept of our message is that do not take anything that belongs to the world, do not take the fashions of this world because nothing is permanent in the world. That is why Jesus publicly announces, I overcame the world. So the first thing that Jesus triumphing on the cross was the world. That is why Jesus said, I am not of this world. But the world hates me. You are not of this world. That is why the world hates you. But if you calm yourself as the worldly people, the world will not hate you. This is the truth. How many of you desire to overcome the world today? Coming to one John chapter five. He that is born of God, he overcome the world. Beloved ones, there is a religion whereby we overcome the world. Today, all our people respect the world. If you consider all that is found in the world, the same things we find it here. Yesterday, if one thing is found in the cinema, today we find it in the church too. The very next day, the person who attends our meeting is also torn with his jeans. A youth camp, there was a boy, a song. Two or three places his jeans pant was torn. I do not understand. I asked him, you are coming for such a big meeting, why not your stitch which is torn? He was a small boy, he was very tense, he said, this is how it is sold. It is after that I understood that a pant is sold in this manner. How would that be? How can we take that boy to heaven now? The dress or the garment that you and I wear will not take us to heaven. Already, they say that all the garbage that are put in the satellite are wandering here and there. Jesus was caught up. They sought for Jesus on the sepulchre. The angels said, go in and see. What did they find there? The linen garments that they bound Jesus with were all found in the sepulchre, so all the garments that you wear will not take you there. That is a glorious land. This is not accepted there. First of all, you have to overcome the world. That is why while in the world, Jesus said, I overcame the world. One John chapter five verse four. Everything that is born of God should overcome the world. Our faith is the victory that overcome the world. What does verse five say? Who shall overcome the world apart from him that believes that Jesus is the son of God? Jesus overcame on the cross and has earned his victory for you. Isaiah chapter fifty-three verse two says. He had no beauty or calmness. He had no visage such that could be desired. He was mauled and he hung on the cross. So the believers should first overcome the world just as Jesus overcame. After coming into this spiritual life. How many of us have overcome the world? That is why all of our messages relate to the world. We have to die to the world. We need a garment just to keep our, preserve our respect. Otherwise, you are not sent to experience or enjoy the world. That you should understand. Saint Paul says, I have authority to experience everything. But he says, those are not worthy of me. Do you know the garment with Jesus robe? Though he was a male, he wore a garment till the end. He also had upper clothing. Jesus was clothed with such a divine garment. So how do we overcome the world? That is why our messages say we should not be glad with the fashions or rudiments of this world. John Romans chapter twelve verse two. Do not be confirmed to the fashions of this world. If you say that Jesus is the son of God by faith, you should overcome the world. Do you think all that God has created is for us to enjoy? That is wrong. When Jesus was on this world. Matthew chapter four verses four, ten and eleven. Jesus was faced with three kinds of temptations. Three was relating to the world. One was lust of the eyes. The other lust of the flesh. Thirdly, the pride of life. When all these three were said before him. Jesus overcame all the three. That is why he said, I overcame the world. He said, I overcame the God of this world. He did not have the fashion of this world. That is why our messages say we should not be glad with the fashions or rudiments of this world. Do not be confirmed to the fashions of this world. If you say that Jesus is the son of God by faith, you should overcome the world. Do you think all that God has created is for us to enjoy? That is wrong. When Jesus was on this world. Matthew chapter four verses four, ten and eleven. Jesus was faced with three kinds of temptations. Three was relating to the world. One was lust of the eyes. The other lust of the flesh. Thirdly, the pride of life. When all these three were said before him. Jesus overcame all the three. That is why he said, I overcame the world. He said, I overcame the God of this world. He did not have the fashion of this world. So in these days, we should not desire to wear all that we see, all that we find, that we have to wear and enjoy. All that you see is vanity. Only that which is unseen, eternal. That is why we say, say no to all these and forsake them. Do not wear costly apparel. Do not adorn your houses in that manner. There is no need for your house to be furnished like that. If you want, you need a decent house to dwell in. Only for our need, we should have. Do not enjoy the world. Money is needful for all. You need money for, I do think. Love of money is the root of all evil. Why do we clearly speak our truth? After coming into this spiritual life. First of all, a believer should overcome the world. This message of Good Friday desires to make you a conqueror. Coming to one John. Coming to verse fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. What is said there? Do not love the world or the things of the world. If a man loves the world, he does not have the love of the father in him. It is clearly said, do not love the world or those things of the world. If you say you love the world and the Lord has given everything in the world that I should enjoy. Coming to one John chapter two verse fourteen. The lust of the eyes, the lust of the flesh and the pride of life, these are of the world, these are not of the father. If a man loves the world, he does not have the love of the father in him. If a man loves the world. He has no love of the father in him. A man says, if your eyes are fixed on the materials, then your anointing is lost. The world and its lust will fade away. After coming into this spiritual life, once you are anointed, you should overcome the world. Galatians chapter six verse fourteen says. What does Saint Paul say? The world is crucified unto me on the cross. I am crucified unto this world. So the world should not be worthy of us. We are not come to accomplish something in this world. God has sent us into this world for holiness. Coming to Hebrews chapter eleven. The Bible speaks with the list of the heroes of faith. Verse thirty-eight says, the world was not worthy of them. Hebrews chapter eleven verse thirty-eight, we read about the world which was not worthy of the list of the heroes. If he overcame on the cross, first of all, he overcame the world. For all the comforts that we have, we can glad ourselves in different ways. If you are permitted to wear the jewels, each of you will wear it in diverse manners. Because half of us have it in our locker. If we are permitted, we will wear it. But what do we do today? Because we have no other way, you have forsaken or have you forsaken it for the truth? You examine yourself. Some of them will not wear it themselves, but will save them up for the children. Past Paul, when he began the ministry, he had five children. At a particular time. He had no money in his hand. He had no money for the food. He asked the Lord saying, Lord, I trusted in you and came into this ministry, but now I am found with nothing on the roads. He said, no. He said, take something and spend it. He looked here and there, he could not find money anywhere. It is then the spirit of the Lord told them, you have saved up some money for your child. All the five are my children. All belong to the ministry. When you, when that is, how can you have the money? After he spent that money, he received the next offering. You read the biography of Pastor Paul. Now is the time that we have to hate the world. All our children are diverted toward the world. Well, there is no profit by calling yourself a Christian. God will keep giving to you. How much ever the Lord gives you, you have to be in the right route. Your mind should not change. At once, the Lord tempted you without giving you. How many of you are entangled in the world today? Have you overcome your dressing? Have you overcome your food? Have you overcome all your fashions? How many of us have overcome the world? Without overcoming the world, if you keep on repeating, I am going to heaven, you are deceiving yourself. Jesus says, I have overcome the world. Your faith is the victory which overcome the world. He that is born of God will overcome the world. If you were born of the Lord, you will surely overcome the world. Secondly. Jesus overcame sin and the flesh. A child of God should triumph in this matter. His flesh was being smitten and hung on the cross. It is on the cross he brought into condemnation the sin and the flesh. Romans chapter eight verse three, what does it say? He condemns sin in the flesh. He destroys sin and the image of sin on the cross. First of all, a believer should overcome the world. Secondly, he should overcome sin and the flesh. Sin is lying in the flesh. Galatians chapter five verse twenty-four says. Have crucified the flesh with the affections and lusts on the cross. Galatians two twenty. I am crucified on the cross. Our religion is one which crucifies on the cross. Your sin should be crucified on the cross. You should crucify your flesh on the cross. After your hands and feet are crucified, you cannot walk as you wish and do as you wish. If a man is vagabond and wandering as he wishes, his feet are not yet sanctified. If he is operating as per his desire, his hands are not yet sanctified. That is why it is said, they that are of Christ have crucified the flesh with the affections and lusts on the cross. Romans chapter six verse six. For the body of sin to be destroyed. Our old man should be crucified with him on the cross. The purpose of Jesus being crucified on the cross is that he crucified sin on the cross. Where does sin dwell? It is the flesh. That is why we call the lesser affections of the flesh. There is the power of sin in the blood. This will keep on instigating in the blood. You have to bridle your sin. That is the anointing needed. At water baptism, you realize you are a sinner. Isn't that true? At water baptism, you confess I am a sinner. Henceforth, I will not sin. So you surrender to water baptism. At anointing, what happens? You receive a power to overpower sin. Romans seven twenty-four. A man cries out saying, oh, wretched man that I am, who shall deliver me? He himself says, there is no deliverance. Romans chapter eight verse two. The law of the spirit of life in Christ hath made me free from the law of sin and debt. So every day when you crucify the sin and the flesh on the cross, you are triumphing. Isaiah fifty-three ten was at, what does it say? He was bruised on the cross. His flesh was torn. He was brought under sufferings. It pleased the Lord to bruise him. We have to control the flesh. To overtake sin, you have to control the flesh. Coming to James chapter three. What is it said there? James chapter three verse two says, a man should bridle his whole body. Jesus overcame the flesh. He overcame sin. How can you say that? I came not on my own, he says. Not even once have I spoken of myself. I have not done anything on my own. To that extent, he had controlled his whole flesh. Can you overcome the flesh? Are you surrendering also to the flesh or is the flesh under your control? Pay attention. So many years have passed by, are you able to bridle your flesh? All those saints and sages, because they could not control their flesh, they tried to nail their flesh, they tried to hang upside down and so on. But for us, it is not so. We have the anointing. Through the anointing, if you shall modify the deeds of the body through the spirit, you shall live. Romans chapter eight verse thirteen says. Coming to first Corinthians chapter fifteen verse thirty-one. What does Saint Paul say? I die daily. Jesus first overcame the world on the cross. Secondly, he triumphed over sin. What does the Bible say? There is no sin in him. He did not know sin. He did not commit any sin. Three qualifications in Jesus. Knew no sin. One who did no sin. One who has no sin. That is why he overcame sin. No sin could come nigh him. Whatever anyone does, he will not bother. Because he had no knowledge of sin. If you are trying to acquire a knowledge about sin and try to forsake it, it is impossible. In the world, they would say, you will learn it. You learn to steal and then forget. One who steals ten rupees, after some will steal hundred rupees. It is not to learn sin afterwards, forget. It is said about Jesus, he knew no sin. He did no sin. He has no sin. If that is true, believers should also have the same qualification. Thirdly, to overcome the flesh. The flesh is the greatest problem. It will not permit you to sit. It will try to make you a scatter. Your throat will become sore, you want to drink water. It will make you feel like you are having diabetes that you have to go to the bathroom. A man should control his flesh. Not only that. It will instigate you to go to the cinema and try to do anything else. Are you able to control your flesh? I do not ask the newcomers. I am asking the anointed ones. Not those who are only water bathers. How many of you who are anointed are able to control and bridle your flesh? Are you able to do it? You would pray well that you should rise up at four o'clock, would find you wake up at seven. So what are you unable to control? Your sleep. You do not want to get angry, but finally you break something down. You will try to bite your tongue and control without speaking, finally you will burst. A person said, I will not get angry at all. His disciple went and asked him, truly, will you not be angry? No, I will not. If somebody hits you, what would you do? If he speaks words of blasphemy. Likewise, he listed out. After a limit, he said, kindly go away. This is the true confession of a worldly man. But the Bible says. Moses who was a murderer, the Bible says that the Lord confessed about him that no one was as mean as him in the whole world. Saul who became poor, who was wandering here and there, and who was persecuting the church, now was being continually smitten and he was silently receiving the stripes. You overcome the flesh, you are the conqueror. If you overcome your eyes, you are the victor. You control your mouth, you are a greatest victor. You control your stomach, then you are a great victor. You control your sleep, you are even more victorious. Saul who became Paul, who was wandering here and there, and who was persecuting the church, now was being continually smitten and he was silently receiving the stripes. You overcome the flesh, you are the conqueror. If you overcome your eyes, you are the victor. You control your mouth, you are a greatest victor. You control your stomach, then you are a great victor. You control your sleep, you are even more victorious. You stop wandering here and there and stop going for tour, then you are even more victorious. If you overcome the television, the net and your mobile, then you are ninety percent overcoming. Are you able to overcome the flesh? Job says, "I have made a covenant with my eyes." Job chapter thirty one verse one, he says, "I have made a covenant with my eyes." That is why I do not look upon a maid, he says. I made a covenant with my eyes. How many among you have overcome the flesh, the sin and the world? Jesus overcame Satan. That is the first ministry of a believer. Mark's Gospel chapter sixteen verse seventeen. What are the signs of them that believe? What is the first sign? They shall drive out devils. I say, "All of them who are present here should drive out devils." Is the devil driving you or are you driving the devil? Just think. Every one of you here can drive out the devil. All these who accept, raise your hands as halal here. You can drive out the devil. Everyone has the authority to drive out devil because you are a believer. There is no need for a past especially. There is no need for a special gifted person for the sin. What are the signs of them that believe? Coming to Luke's Gospel chapter ten. The disciples who never received the anointing says the devils obey them. The anointing was not poured forth that time. Before the day of Pentecost, by faith, they cast out devils. So what does that mean? A believer who is water baptized can drive out the devil. How many of you are driving out devils today? If the power supply is off, then immediately he is scared. If there is a lizard on the wall, the sisters are not in the house. You shall take up circles. If you shall drink anything that shall hurt you, it shall not hurt you. He that is in you is greater. To that extent, you should have faith and hope poured in you. The day you became a believer. Even on that day, there is power and authority given to you. You have to bring out the power and authority in you. I give you authority to overcome all the powers of the devil. Nothing shall by any means hurt you. You have to be careful. You use so much of power. Use it with insulation, there is no problem. You try to go and catch the wire, you will be hanging. Do not try to touch anyone easily. Do not be a part-taker of his sins. It does not mean you have to go and put your hand on it, lay your hands on him and pray, you can stand and pray. Pastor Aruldas, when he used to visit the people along with the sisters, He will not go and mount up a bus immediately. The sisters will go in and put a seat for him. There will be big quarrels in the bus. Because as the crowd increases. Everyone will be attracted towards that seat. No, he is standing out. The sisters would say, "Please come in and sit in the seat because people are fighting for the seat." You will keep on saying, "I will come, I will come." Finally, when the bus is about to leave, he will get in. When the moment he gets to his seat. Those people who are possessed in the bus will try to jump over the seat and run away. He said, "This is why I came late." If I come early, then no one will reach his place. Such powers are still existing. He that is in you is greater. There is your power in you. You are unable to make use of it. Isn't that true? There are so many incidents in the world. A man was traveling in the ship. The ship was moving. It is the time of effort. Everyone went for their food. People took their need. He was watching. Without eating, he went back to his room. It was the night. Everyone went for the dinner. He went and saw. No one invited him. He had no money. He went back to his seat. His neighbor asked him, "Why you do not take the food in the afternoon and the night? Is there any problem with you?" Then he said, I only took the ticket, I do not have money for my food because I am in poverty. I only want to reach my place. He said, "You have paid everything on your ticket, they would give you free of course the food, why are you seated here?" At salvation, all power is given unto you. It is you who are in hunger and famine and going around and fighting. John's Gospel chapter one, if you read, you see all those who believe on the name of Jesus, they have the power and authority given in the name of Jesus. Are you able to, can you use that power? You have to use it. Our young boys and girls can cast out devils. Make use of the power and authority in you. The churches that I am there, I will tell. Go stand very close to one who is casting out the devil. Do not run away. The moment you go there. If the person says, "It is burning," then you have the power. Go to C M C. If a person says, "You came and prayed for me yesterday and I was healed," you have the healing power. You try and use that one who is in you is greater. You will not do anything. You come at ten thirty, return at eleven thirty, then which heaven will you head to? You are not here for the praising song, you are not here for saying amen. The worldly man has come into the Lord, he is so strong in the Lord. You have the power to drive out the devil. One John chapter two verses thirteen and fourteen, he says, "Oh, young man, because you overcome the wicked one, I write unto you." The young man should overcome the wicked one. That is the most important thing. How many of you overcome Satan today? Revelation chapter twelve verse eleven. By the blood of the lamb and by the word of the testimony, they overcame the dragon, the old serpent. Use the word of God. Use your power. Use your knees. Use the power in the name of Jesus. You say, "Get thee hence," it will leave. It will try to discourage you and threaten you, saying, "You do not have holiness, you do not have this and that." This one pastor who headed to drive out the devil. It said, "You know that you are not worthy to drive out the devil, you better mind your business." He said, I know I am not qualified. There is the understanding between me and my God. God knows and I know about it. But now, in the name of Jesus, I ask you to go away, get out. It fell and it went away. First of all, it will come and discourage you, it will accuse you and confuse you and trouble you and make you run away. Two of them went to drive out a devil. They were going in Hastings. In between, there was a believer's house. They were in fast. There was a big group waiting for them. Now what happened? On their way. There was a believer's sister who called, Make a small prayer in my house. When they went there. They said, "Take a small drink." No, we will not. At least eat the grapes. They had the grapes. One said, "We are going for an important purpose." We are fasting. The one who accompanied him was also fasting. Once he saw the grapes, he fell for the grapes. He took the juice. He ate two or three grapes. Now both of them went to cast out the devil. The devil was at its height. Everyone were expecting that, but the moment both these arrived there, the devil is going to fall away. The moment they arrived, The devil said, One person is on fire, the other person is dumb. One person is on fire. The other is just water. If he will drive me out, I will get into him. It gives an open statement. Two of them are coming, one is on fire. The other is not so. If one person will drive me out, I will get into the other. One who ate the grapes is now become as nothing. We do not know the one cup of oats that we drink, whether it is become as just plain water or ice water. What is our fasting? How is our fasting? All that you have eaten, you can think of it. Again, we are seated as plain water. Someone will cast them out and it will get into us. What is your state? Properly, you should drive them out. Oh, young man, because you have overcome the wicked one, I write unto you. You should overcome the dragon. Revelation chapter twelve verses ten and eleven, it is said, "They overcame the dragon by the blood of the lamb." Revelation seventeen verses thirteen and fourteen. It is said, "They overcame the beast." How do they overcame the beast? They stood with the lamp and they overcame them. Who are they? Called, The chosen, And the faithful. If you are the called, chosen and the faithful, you will overcome the beast. If you have the word of the testimony and the blood of the lamb in you, you should overcome the dragon, the beast. One John chapter four verses three and four. You should overcome Antichrist. He that is in you is greater than he that is in the world, you should overcome the Antichrist. Romans chapter fourteen verse twenty. Chapter sixteen verse twenty says, "God of peace shall bruise Satan under your feet shortly." One John chapter three verse eight. What does the Bible say? The son of God manifested that he may destroy the works of the devil. When you sum them all up, What did Jesus triumph on the cross? First of all, he overcame the world. Secondly, he overcame sin. Thirdly, he overcame the flesh. Fourthly, he overcame the devil. He overcame the wicked one. He overcame the beast. He overcame the dragon. He overcame the Antichrist. Above all, Jesus overcame death. Isaiah chapter twenty five verse eight. He swallowed up death in victory. Acts chapter two verse twenty four. The pangs of death could not tie him up. He broke the pangs of death. A believer should overcome death. Today, death is our last enemy. If a person stands for the truth, how can you find him out? He will shake only if it is death that he faces. Bible says, "We should overcome even if we have to face death." Our people will solve all the other problems easily. If our conflict is unto death, then only our faith is tried. We need a group of people who says, "Christ is my life." We need a group which says, "Death is my gain." Those who have a good death, this is what we put in their coffin box, "Christ is my life, death is my gain." Pastor K Stephen recently died at Adaya. I was very closely standing there. It was a time where he was striving. In the midst of that, he confesses, "Christ is my life." He said, "Christ is my life." I did not know because he was going to die, so I thought it was not like that. He shouted out aloud, saying, "Christ is my life, death is my gain," in English, when I thought he is afraid of death, he is going to die. Within five minutes, again he came to a critical condition. Again, he repeated the same words. I was standing very close to him, but I could not understand. I never expected his death. He is trying to resist death. He knew that he was going to die, so he came to the confession of Saint Paul. He said, "Whether it be life or death, but that Christ may be glorified in me." Death is my gain. Twice, he said this. Within a short while, he died. It is then I understood, he did not speak out in fear, he overcame death in victory. What will we do? Carry me immediately to C M C, if not for C M C, at least take me to Apollo in Chennai and save me. Why? Why do we say that? It is not the fear of death, but because we have not. We are prepared to go then. You can immediately see the chariot. You can see the angels of the Lord descending for you. If your end is right, then you can immediately say, "My redeemer comes." The chariots are coming down for me. You can say, "The angels of the Lord come." You do not have a proper life, that is why you try to escape this time. We should boldly contend for the faith which was once delivered to the saints. Jesus overcame death. According to first Corinthians fifteen fifty five. Oh, death, where is the sting? Oh, grave, where is the victory? He overcame the grave. Acts two twenty seven, we need, Thou shall not leave his soul in hell. His soul did not head to hell. The gates of hell shall not prevail, the church. Lo, repeat to the holy name of the Lord. Let's all close our eyes. Perhaps up till now, you did not face the victory. The death of the cross is that which will bring you victory. Jesus did not triumph for himself. The victory of Jesus is yours and mine. What does the Bible say? The horse is prepared against the day of the devil. Safety or victory is of the Lord. How many of you believe this? Today, the Lord is going to grant you the victory. What is that? Thanks be to God, which causes us to triumph in everything in Christ Jesus. What is the Bible say? He makes us triumph in Christ always. Let's all close our eyes beyond our knees. This religion is not a religion which is victorious, it is a religion which makes you a conqueror. How many of you believe this? We are more than conquerors through him that love us. Jesus overcame on the cross. These words are sent to. These words are sent unto us that we might be victors today. His victory is yours and mine. How many of you admit with the same, lift up your right hands? The victory of the cross of Jesus is mine, all those who say this, lift up your hands. I will be victorious just as Jesus overcame. I will overcome the flesh. I will overcome sin. I will overcome the beast. I will overcome the wicked one. I will overcome the dragon. I will be victorious over the Antichrist. I will overcome hell and death. I will be a conqueror. You shall separate me from the lover coast. I shall be a conqueror. Today, receiving the power of victory, let us return. Jesus triumphed on the cross. One group of people in the world. Call it a day of sorrow. They will keep lamenting as they return. Another group in the world says. This is a good Friday. What are we going to address this Friday? We will call this victorious Friday. How many of you can say that? My Jesus was victorious on the cross for me. To make me victorious, he was defeated. To make me victorious, he was defeated. Jesus overcame for me. Today, I shall overcome. You are defeating up till now, shall be victorious in spite. Amen. You hark into my words and surrender yourself. Jesus uttered a word. Just as I overcame. He that overcomeeth. I will grant him to sit with me on the throne with my father, just as I overcame and sat with my father on the throne. He that overcomeeth just as Jesus overcame, has his part in the throne. What has Jesus overcome now? He's overcome the world. The sin. The flesh. Death. Hell. The Antichrist. The beast. The dragon. The wicked one. Satan. The devil. Just as he overcame. Only so, overcome will have the throne. You have to overcome just as Jesus overcame. If you overcome just as your father overcame, that is a sign of his son. How many of you are going to surrender for this anointing? Only lift up your right hand. The one who called you will hold your hand. My son, my daughter, I will grant you to overcome just as I overcame. When will you overcome? You will overcome everywhere, every time. I will grant you the victory. My victory is yours. He that is in you is greater than he that is in the world. One, the son of Jesus, you have a promise. You are going to receive an assurance that you will be victorious, you will have a seal of victory on you. You should not return empty as you come for this meeting. You are going to go into the world again. You should be victorious there. Everywhere you are defeated, you should overcome. In your family. Among your friends. In your office. In your business. In your ministry. Overcome the devil. Overcome the powers of the enemy. Overcome the dragon. The Lord is with you. Amman, 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 amman. The angel of the Lord sought for a man who was afraid, who trembled, who became an unbeliever and covered, and sat in a corner. Who was he? What does the Lord tell him? You have come as an unbeliever, as a coward, as one who is afraid and trembling, just to attend the meeting, but the Lord has sought for you. Two words of the Lord to you. Oh mighty man. This is your word. You know he will be defeated, but the Lord knows how to make you a victor. To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." You are not. You will be victorious. You are the Lord which makes you triumph. You are the Abishagam, Jai Atin Abishagam. You are the Lord that you receive as a victorious Lord. To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." What is the Lord going to do for them? The Lord is going to be with them as a mighty terrible man. After now, you are defeated, henceforth you will be victorious. How many of you believe this? Just the Lord is going to make you a victor. Your challenge. You are going to call you, you are the one who is a victor. To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you." To whom the Lord said, "Oh mighty man, the Lord is with you."
Shottanam, shottanam. Pershutthamalanduvaray, aasruthikabittamada mayman samuththakainindi odum stottrikiro. Pershutthamayanavrindakalevalile engadvaathile kadandavandhiranduvaray. Engadharane neerpoorpaduthi aasruthi, dakalevalile engudha mulugulagundhathavu thukathila aandhu umayaraadithu kundakkendakalevalile naagundangala jayathodu sandoshathodu manasamuththala aaradhike. Neerengla silvile sindhanarathathinaale englikupiridhana jayathai vetchinglikuthandhrakranaade devan. Anduvaray jayathodu mayaraadhike maymapadutha dakalevalile engli kodisidhararakanindi odum stottrikirangathavi. Anduvaray neerindakalevalile engadharande ovvarpadhalay aasruthi iranduvaray. Kaththavi neerenglaodu peshinadjiiva vaththilakagam stottranduvaray. Neethurathenangale, adhigaringale, urindugundu veliyerangamana kolamagi silvile arungbal vettisirandhadana. Endavarthiyanmadu engleode peshinadaiyukanindi odum stottrikiro. Neesaglatthi silvile vettisirandhiranduvaray. Kaththaviyum stotthani endu ulagathu vettisirandhiranduvaray. Neerandu baamsathai vettisirandhiranduvaray. Paavathin neer vettisirandhiranduvaray. Kaththavi pisasani neer jaitthi iranduvaray. Anduvaray andha jaitthi endevan engladu kuiderkara devukaanindi odum stottrikiro. Neerandhi krishnavetthisirandhiranduvaray. Kaththaviyum stotthani valusarpathini vettisirandhiranduvaray. Kaththaviyum stotthani maranathin padhaalathin vettisirandhiranduvaray. Nee jayavindharai jaitthi nee kataamundanallu vithrendhiranduvaray. Andhe esinglaode padarkiriranduvaray. Kaththavi samadhanthi devan, satthanin kaalgilingal nassikradhavan engladu padarkirandhadi stottrikiranduvaray. Kaththavi nee ulagathulunnavare parkalum, engladu kradhavariyavandheselikri. Pariyadevan engladu kuiderkiriranduvaray. Kaththaviyum stotthram saachin vasanathinaal, aattukuttiin rathathinaal amne jaitthaaran selleppadike. Andha jaitthi endevan engladu kuiderndu, pariyakathari engladu kuiderndu pradhanajaytha kantiitikadai devukaanindi odum stotthikiro. Endavasanathiketanangal mugda, adhi urumiayakekundu, andhavakathatthangal angipritthikundu, sathrujayka, pisasajayka, ulagathimamsathajayka. Avyanavargalikubelanthandhrakriyarakas stotthanduvaray. Endabishayithanangal, putipithkundu, abishayithanallu nirepappadavandhavala. Sagaththi jayka, valami adhigaramdandha yesuinaangal, sarandugundhendavanaandharothathal jageramai odakiruvadaru. Engalithaal thuravirumiyankarum, deketthadan dekrivin vaththimridanangal jeevthi. Anduvaray naangal jayaligai mari, jaitthi jaitthaan yesuinaangal pinpetti. Naangal mugda jayaligala moduvarachingasinnathirgangal thaidiyakum, thaalti virumiyankumda karathile tharum. Ella thudigana me meduthukundu, yesuinaamathil vendiklorum pidavain.